And then I'm going to start live streaming, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Well, I mean, recording's happening already, let's start the live stream because as I say, I'm aware. It's not going on my timeline, no. Hang on, Waymouth Town Council, there we go. Otherwise my family will wonder what's going on. So there we are, I think we are live on Facebook, everybody. So thank you for joining us on Facebook for this Winter Town Assembly. And I'd like to hand over to the Mayor, councillor Colin Huckle, to officially open the meeting.
Thank you very much, Town Clerk. Well, good evening, everybody that is following and watching us. Unfortunately, we're not able to meet in person, which is really the ideal situation for the town assembly. But we have a number of speakers for you presenting updates on some interesting projects which are going on. And well, sort of rehearsed and implemented. I would just like to say that due to Covid, our staff have managed very extremely well, either working from home and now partly back in the office. And our parks and gardens and outside staff have continued to work. And I'd like to thank them all for all their hard work, all that they've done for our community and our town. Just a few announcements of awards that we've received before we hear the presentations. We've received the gain the Blue Flag Award in connection with our beach. Two green flags in connection with Green Hill Gardens and Sansford Gardens. The purple flag in respect of our night time economy and partnerships that we have to try and keep people safe in the night time. The Sheriff's, High Sheriff's Award in connection with Tumble Down Farm. And quite a new one, something that we as a town haven't entered for a number of years. And this is a Britain in Bloom Gold Award in the Business Improvement District for Town and City Centres category. And this showed partnership work in not only with the We Are Waymouth, which is Waymouth bid, representing the businesses in the town, but also highways and waste services and clearly our own services. Because most of the award related to Green Hill Gardens, the Espinade, the south of the harbour area and the hanging basket through the town. And so that was a very welcome award. Now I'll pass you back to Town Clerk, who will do the next slot. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Huckle. So just as a little bit of an outline about this meeting, many of you watching on Facebook will hopefully remember the annual town assemblies that the Town Council holds in March every year. Now, this is a legal requirement that there is an annual meeting held within the parish. And it normally falls to the Town Council to organise that. Legally, it has to be held in March, April or May, under the terms of the Local Government Act. We normally hold ours in March, so that it coincides with coming to the end of the financial year. And we can give you all an accurate picture on what happened in the previous 12 months, which the financial year. We've been talking at all councils, have been discussing how to communicate effectively what it is the Town Council's doing, what the updates are on some of the great projects the Town Council's doing. And it struck councillors that actually having an additional town assembly in the winter might be a really good way forward. Unfortunately, as councillor Huckle has said, we've been unable to hold that face to face. We really look forward to the time when we can have our annual town assembly or a town assembly in the council chamber. And all of you can come along and talk to us and talk to our partners and ask questions, et cetera, et cetera. But the time is not right for that just yet. So we're holding this Winter Town Assembly online. And there's a range of presentations on some of the great stuff we've been doing since the last assembly in March. But I'm going to kick off. I'm going to. There we go. Now, I'm hoping, I'm having a little look to the side, just going to check that that is live. Everybody on Facebook can see the presentation and they can. So I'm going to kick off with this little introduction presentation. As I said, this is the Winter Town Assembly. And this is what, this is how we're going to run the next couple of hours. So you've got an update from me. David Norton's going to be talking to all of us about the neighbourhood plan. Then councillor John Orles talking about Tumble Down Farm. Followed by two slots from councillor David Harris, one on Radipole Park and Gardens and one on the climate emergency work we're doing. Then we're going to hand over to councillor Hope for 10 minutes on the events that the councils held. Then we're going to hear from councillor Luke Wakeling on the boundary work that we've been doing and the proposals we've put together, both for our main external boundaries, it were, and for the internal warding arrangements within that Town Council boundary. Then we're going to hand over to questions from you. We have had some pre notified. If time does allow, we will be looking in the comments section of the Facebook feed. So if you've got a question you'd like us to answer, pop it in there. I'll be scanning through and hopefully we'll get through some of those as well. And then just before nine o'clock, the mayor will close the assembly. So we've got two hours together to update you on everything we're doing and hopefully respond to a lot of your questions. But just a little bit from me, a little bit on the outline of the Town Council. We were only established on the first of April 2019, so we're coming up to our third birthday very soon. We have 29 councillors. There is a proposal in that that's going to go up to 30 and councillor Luke Wakeling will be talking about that a little later. We have up to 64 staff. Now, I say up to because we have a lot of seasonal staff, particularly on the beach, but also in the cleansing team and in our parks and open spaces team. Obviously, there's a lot more work in some aspects, in some areas where we work in the summer months. So the precept is 3.34 million. Now, the precept is what we call that bit of your council tax that comes to the Town Council. So from everybody who lives in Waymouth, we get 3.34 million. And that was the precept for, since we started in 2019. So we've had zero percent rises since we were formed. Our actual budget is 4.2 million though, so we have about 860,000 of other income. That means for the average property in Waymouth, and if you recall, when you look at your council tax bill, it tells you which band your house is in. The average house in Waymouth is a Bambi. And if you live in one of those average Bambi houses, you will pay the Town Council £2.78 per week for all the services we provide, or one small latte, which is my preferred unit of measurement. So what do we do? Quick rattle through parks, gardens, open spaces, amenity land and play areas, cemeteries and allotments, nine public toilets, that's nine public toilet buildings, each with anywhere from four to 22 public toilets in them each. Waymouth Beach, that's all three and a half miles of it. And over 1 million people visit Waymouth each year. And we're responsible for their health and safety on the beach and in our parks and gardens whilst they're here. We run events and you'll be hearing more about that later from councillor Hope, Chair of Services. Community development, we work in partnership particularly with We Are Waymouth to support local businesses. We have lots of local improvement projects running at the moment and you'll be hearing about these again later tonight. Tumble Down Farm, Radipole Park and Gardens and the neighbourhood plan being the main ones. And then we've got all the stuff that happens behind the scenes that means that we run as an effective and an efficient council. So we have governance, that's organising council meetings and making sure that our councillors are well looked after, supported to do their vital role in the community, have everything they need and that all the legal bits that go along with being a councillor are taken care of. Finance, obviously with a budget of 4.2 million, we have a lot of finance work. HR with 64 staff, we have to make sure we look after our staff. Support for councillors, communication, civic work with the mayor and other councillors as well. Managing our buildings, our facilities, not just the toilets, not just some of the buildings in parks and gardens, but the commercial road offices and the beach office. Health and safety, obviously, everything we do has to be risk assessed and health and safety is a priority for us, as you would expect. We've got equalities, our equipment, our commitment in that field. And also climate change, a big piece of work coming through for us since we declared a climate and ecological emergency way back in 2019. So we have seven agreed priorities that councillors have agreed. You'll be aware of these from previous presentations, but it's improved the wellbeing of the people of Waymouth. That's our number one priority. Manage the council's assets and resources responsibly and transparently. Manage the council services effectively to meet the needs of the communities we serve. Work to become greener and cleaner in our activities, as well as supporting our communities, all of you, and our partners to be as green as possible. Waymouth will only become greener and cleaner if we all work together. The responsibility doesn't sit with any one agency or any one group of people, it's all of us working together. We're promoting opportunities for economic success in the area. We strive for continuous improvement and service development. Because we're quite a new council, we're constantly refining what it is we do, how we can work better, how we can work more efficiently. And we work with our partners to deliver all of those core values within our strategy, all of those priorities. We work particularly closely with you, our communities, with Dorset Police, with Dorset Council, with public health at the moment, there's a lot of meetings going on there. And also civic society, the Noth4, and you'll hear about a lot of our partners going through this evening. So what have we done since March, since the last time we spoke to you at an assembly? What have we actually done? So we've opened and launched the beach cafe to complement the prom cafe and both cafes have achieved five star food hygiene ratings. We've generated an income of £81,547 from beach equipment hires. That's a record number of beach hires this year. And there you can see the breakdown between deck chairs, both on the beach and on the prom, windbreaks and sunbeds. And as you'll be aware from previous meetings, the last services meeting, I think it was, agreed some investment to improve our stock. And also because we're hiring more and more, to make sure we have enough deck chairs, windbreaks and sunbeds for all of you who want to hire them and enjoy them on the beach. We've supported various events in the town to bring in trade, particularly on less busy days. Hopefully you'll remember the amazing sense of unity, the great fireworks we had during the summer that we held on a Monday night to get people coming into the town and enjoying Waymouth, not just on the weekends. We trialled less noisy fireworks. Now, a point I really want to make because it's something that always comes up in the comments section. And I've even seen it in some discussions today, is that we should be using silent fireworks. Okay, silent fireworks do not exist. They don't exist. You can get ones that are a bit more quiet, but if you want an explosion, a byproduct of an explosion is noise. You cannot get silent fireworks now. Some of you might point me in the direction of that wonderful video from a town in Italy. And I can't remember it, the name of it. But there's a video that's very popular on Facebook and on YouTube of silent firework displaying in Italy. Watch that through, read the captions, because it does say about halfway through that silent fireworks don't exist and what they actually use are ones that are just slightly less noisy. So we've trialled the less noisy fireworks. And hopefully some of you managed to get down to the beach and see some of the less noisy displays and the more traditional displays. So we've had some really good staff achievements. Now, why this is important is it means we can do all these projects you're hearing about to a higher standard and more efficiently. We have two new APMP, now that's the Association of Project Managers, qualified project managers within the council now. We've got an additional SILCA qualified senior manager. Now, SILCA is the gold standard qualification for clerks. And the reason that's important is that means that the Town Council can take something on called the General Power of Competence. That means that we can do an awful lot more than a traditional town and parish councillor are because we have these fully qualified senior staff members. And we've got several of our staff getting ILCA, which is the introduction to local council administration. Again, it's strengthening how well we can work, how well we know our legal stuff, how well we manage our finances. That means that the council, that we can assure you that the council is being very well run. And if you'll have seen the results at previous full council meetings of our internal and external audit, we've had that tested, we've asked people to come in, check what we're doing. And we've had really great reports from both internal and external audit. We have taken on the bereavement service for burials and memorials within Town Council cemeteries. Our colleagues at Dorset Council continued running those for an amount of time after we were created in April. And we've just fully taken on the running of those services now. We live stream our full council and committee meetings on Facebook. So that's been a real shift that was brought in because of Covid. But as you can see tonight, and if you've watched any of our meetings that we have held face to face, you'll know that we're still live streaming. We haven't gone back to pre Covid ways of working. We're still trying to engage with as many people in our community as we can. Committees and full council get between 300 and 800 views. That's not all live, when we're live, sometimes we get up to 40, 50, 60. But people are coming back to our Facebook page and watching them again and again. And our event videos, so fireworks, the annual town assembly, remembrance, all the other videos we're posting are getting over 2,000 views, which is great. But we do want to increase that. So if, hopefully if you're watching this, you're already following our Facebook page. But do make sure you follow Facebook page so you get all of our updates because we issue an awful lot of news via Facebook, as well as on our website, on Twitter. And we issue press releases and I'll tell you a little bit about those in a minute. So between the first March and the 11th of November this year, we reached over 100,000 people on Facebook, which was up over 17% on the previous year. And over the same period, we had 62,000 engagements. That's what Facebook call clicks, likes, shares, comments. And that's up over 10% on the previous year. So we're growing how we engage with all of you. And in November, our Twitter followers topped 1,000 for the first time. So again, we're looking at that, we are looking at new ways to engage, we're looking at Instagram and other ways that we can engage with you, as well as when we get back to these face to face meetings, they're open to the public. So come along, come along and talk to us, ask questions. We issued 68 news releases to keep people informed. And obviously, one of the main ways those news releases get out to the public is via the Dorset Echo. Parks introduced a quarterly newsletter, we joined the local nature partnership. A tree trail was introduced at Lodmore Country Park and a nature sculpture trail at Green Hill Gardens. We planted 624 trees, including a children's community woodland with a tree for every child who started school in Waymouth during the pandemic. We put new barbecue bins and slabs up at the Noth Gardens and Lodmore Country Park to try and help people enjoy our gardens in a more safe way and reduce the risk of wildfires. You'll all be aware of some of the horrendous photos of the damage that was done in places like Wareham, where these fires got out of control. So we're trying to ensure that people can enjoy our open spaces as safely as possible. Installed marine information boards at the Noth Gardens, they're great. Do go and have a look at them because you can see all the different creatures that live in the sea just off the Noth Gardens. We held a wildlife discovery day for 30 children at the community woodland at Lynx Road and created a bug hotel, very exciting. And we've created wildflower areas at Green Hill Noth and Radipole. So councillor Huckle has alluded to these already. The awards we've gained since March are green flags for Sansford and Green Hill Gardens, blue flag for the beach, purple flag for the town centre and Britain in Bloom Gold Award, working with We Are Waymouth. We also got the Living Churchyard Awards for Malcolm and White Cemeteries. So one thing that gets levelled at councils a lot, the criticism is that we waste money. So if you've been to one of our assemblies before or seen one of my presentations before, you'll know that I always have a slide there to tell you how much of your money we have wasted. And so this year, well, since March, we've wasted just over 18,000 pounds of your money. That's about one pound per household in Waymouth that we have wasted. Now, what have we wasted your money on? Well, there's a photo of some vandalism of one of the electrical installation boxes that we have. So we've wasted your money on putting right vandalism and repairs to the tune of about five and a half thousand pounds. And we've also wasted another just short of 12,000 pounds picking up litter. So that is money that we're wasting. We shouldn't have to put right vandalism. We shouldn't have to make repairs when people decide that they're going to try and spoil something. And we shouldn't have to spend money picking up litter for people who don't want to take their litter home with them or use a bin. So there we go. Please help us save as much money as possible, acting responsibly and helping us. When, if you see anything happening that you think shouldn't be happening, please report it. So thank you, that brings you to the end of my little whistle stop presentation. And I am going to stop sharing my screen, move back to the main screen. And I am now going to hand over to councillor Norton, who's going to talk to us for the next 10 minutes or so about the neighbourhood plan. Thank you councillor Norton. Oh, you're on mute councillor. You're, you're still on mute David.
Oh, there. Sorry, because I pressed the presentation, it all shifted and it's up in the top right hand corner. Anyway, good evening, everybody. I'm going to put this on present, in which case I can't see you. So, right. So you should now see a map of Waymouth and I'm going to take you through our plan for Waymouth's future. So the neighbourhood plan covers the whole of Waymouth. And this is a document which we're producing. As many small areas have, we'll be producing a neighbourhood plan for one of the biggest areas in the country. And we were very keen to make it across the whole of Waymouth, so that no community in Waymouth gets left out. This will become the principal document alongside the new local plan that planning officers use in their decision making, once it gets made in 2024. And will be in place for at least 15 years, although we might update it meanwhile. And we've had a number of bits of work done and I spoke about this back in March, when we'd gone through our initial survey. But we've also had a character area assessment completed for us by AECOM. And because Waymouth is so big, they split Waymouth into five character areas. And they're shown on this map in colour. The two green areas are the ones bottom on the list, the semi rural areas, which are the villages in many respects that form a very different part of our community. And then right down in the centre, in the nice blue colour, we've got the town centre, seafront and harbour sides. That's the inner and outer harbour. The urban area across Westham, Radipole, Spa and Lodmore. The coastal urban area at White Regis, Southland and Rodwell. And the suburban late 20th century area, where a lot of the house building went on that really expanded Waymouth. That's across Southland, Southhill, Redlands, Overcombe and Littlemore. So I'm going to take you through some of the potential, excuse me, some of the potential benefits of the Waymouth neighbourhood plan. Apart from the fact that it becomes the principal planning document alongside the local plan. So one thing that will be a direct result, when our plan is made, the amount of community, sorry, community infrastructure levy money we receive goes up from 15% of what's put in by developers to 25% for Waymouth Town Council to decide how it is spent across the community. Another benefit under local landscape and green spaces, we can actually protect areas of community value as local green spaces. And we'll be coming out shortly, asking you to nominate areas which you think should be designated local green spaces. You have to demonstrate the community value and if that passes through, that area won't get built on. We're also identifying areas for improved planting and nature conservation. And we've been doing some of this whilst we've been doing our walkabouts, which I'll talk about in a moment. One of our goals is to encourage better paid job, local jobs. And we're looking for additional areas of employment land. Because within the Dorset local plan, there's not that much employment land identified for the jobs that we need in Waymouth. We can also specify more tightly the types of employment needed. And we'd like to recommend an enterprise zone, but that's not something that we can do directly within the neighbourhood plan. But the evidence we gather can help support that. We also think that we need to encourage affordable homes for local people. The housing needs analysis, I'll talk about in a moment. But what we can actually do is specify, Dorset local plan says 3,225 new homes in Waymouth. But it doesn't say particularly what type of houses, one bed, two bed, four bed, five bed. And it doesn't say for affordable homes what the allocation policy should be. Should it be favouring local people? Should it be favouring essential workers? Those are the sort of things we can decide in a local plan. It could set a higher discount for first homes. The government set 30% as the minimum discount on first homes. But we could set it higher at 40% or 50% and we'd need to justify that because of the local wages in Waymouth and cost of houses. We can identify areas outside the development boundary for mostly affordable housing. So a developer led house build will deliver 35% affordable housing. But an area outside the development boundary, what's known as an exception site, can actually deliver anything up to 100%. Although we favour mixed developments. We can identify areas which would be suitable for running by a community land trust. And we can identify areas for co housing or self build. We could also looking, one of our goals is promoting a sustainable future. So where could we and what should our policy be for renewable energy products, projects? We have an idea that everybody should be able to walk to their local amenities, their facilities, their school. We have an idea that, that we can improve upon the standards for energy efficiency in our homes, rather than rely upon the statements Dorset Council have done. And we can also protect and enhance our local sites, as I've mentioned, defining the characteristics of conservation areas, putting new buildings forward for local listing. You might say, why do we need change in Waymouth? And the graphic on the right shows the index of multiple deprivation across all the lowest support output areas, that's a way of measuring data in Waymouth. And you can see that we've got some areas which are in the top with a number 10 or a number nine, which are in the best areas in the country. And we've got some areas, ones and twos on the map, that are in the worst areas in the country. And a statistic which you may not be aware of is that 25% of people in Waymouth earn less than £14,775 annually. And that contrast between those who are not deprived and those who are deprived is at its most extreme in Waymouth for the whole of Dorset. I mentioned already that Dorset Council has identified 325 homes required by 2038. We've got to try and make sure that those houses go where we would like them to go and they're the type of houses that we want. We have had a housing needs analysis conducted by AECOM. And this graphic here in the middle shows you that for most people on an average income, they can afford to rent and rent properties, but they can't afford to buy properties outright. So that's something our local, our neighbourhood plan will focus on. Just going to go on to social mobility. Again, back in 2017, Waymouth ranked 322nd out of 324. We were third from the bottom in terms of lacking social mobility. Councillor Barrow raised this back in 2019, when the new Dorset Council was raised, came into being. And this year, Dorset Council have announced a stronger neighbourhood initiative, which will focus on areas came into being. And this year, Dorset council have announced a stronger neighbourhoods initiative, which will focus on areas in Weymouth and Portland. So we did an initial survey back in December, January of last year. And we formed from that our vision, which you can read on the top here and our mission. And under the, and we produced twenty four aims under five headings. I'll let you just browse those headings. So better paid and more diverse jobs. I won't read it all. Homes, I've already said, a mixed, broad mix of homes, but focusing on affordable. Preserving and enhancing our environment, open environments, sustainable environments, working towards the climate emergency and celebrating Weymouth's unique characteristics. Those titles in blue there are our theme groups. This will help us progress the neighbourhood plan into its next phase and we need your help in doing so. Actually producing that Weymouth neighbourhood plan. So we're asking if you're interested in contributing to any of those topics, please get in touch and I'll explain that on the next slide. So the idea of a neighbourhood plan is that it doesn't just arrive at the referendum in twenty, late twenty twenty three, but you get to hear about it through the period and you get to contribute and express your views. So we've run our initial survey. We established a steering group back in March with seven members of the public and four councillors. And we've held a few public events, but not as many as we'd like. And we've held a number of walkabouts and you can see the areas that those walkabouts have covered on the map. So what we're asking is for you to join our theme groups, which will be starting in the new year. Where we actually be developing the objectives and policies for a future Weymouth. So the next steps, having produced those objectives and policies, is we take our draft plan, go through public consultation. And eventually, towards the end of twenty twenty three, everybody gets a chance to vote in a referendum for the neighbourhood plan. And we'd ask you to think of the future because it's not just about you, it's about your children that we should be thinking for the future of Weymouth. So here's some contact details. The web page is off the main town council site. You can email directly to neighbourhood at weymouthtowncouncil.gov.uk or you can get in touch with one of the members of the steering group. I'll point out some of the names here. Sandy Wilson is chair of the neighbourhood plan group. I'm the deputy chair. And as you can see here, we've got another, a number of members who are some of whom are councillors and many of whom aren't, our project managers Clive Tuck and our project officers Rosie Osborne. So that brings my talk on neighbourhood plan to a close. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you councillor Northern. And just for anyone watching on Facebook, obviously you're, you're, you're watching us on, on Facebook. So just send us a message if you are interested in the neighbourhood plan or anything that happens tonight. Let us have your email address and then we can get back in touch with you and respond to your questions or if you want to get involved, we can let you know how to do that. So another way of contacting us, send us a message via Facebook. Okay, thank you. So next we have councillor John Oral, who's going to talk to us about the project up at Tumble Down Farm. Councillor Oral.
Thank you, Ken Clark. Do you have my slides or shall I try and share them myself?
Allow me just one moment.
Yeah, I'll start talking while you, while you find them. Thanks. So, so tumble, tumble down farm. This is an area which is owned by the town council and it's a real opportunity to improve our town. It's, it's great that I've come just after councillor Northern because he's set the scene for my presentation. What curiously in Weymouth, it, it looks very attractive from the seafront and from the marvelous views. But hidden behind those views is some real poverty and deprivation. As councillor Northern's slide showed, a little more central Weymouth, western, there's some real need. I've worked thirty years as a doctor and I've seen the need in terms of health. Now, the, the problem in hea- in health is that the NHS is very keen that we do exercise on prescription, but the NHS is not very keen on providing it. So that's what we're aiming to, this is one of the things I'd like to address through this, this great project. So next slide, please. This is a slightly blurred view of where Tumble Down Farm is for those who don't know. We're looking here at the very north end of Radipole Lake. And on the right here, you've got St Anne's Church. In the centre, you've got these fields which flood when it rains. And then up here, we've got Southhill. So a lot of people who've lived in Weymouth for years don't really know it exists. It's a hidden gem, really. A lot of it, we won't be developing because it's, it's triple S I, sites of special scientific interest. But there's this area near that yellow circle. The yellow circle is the old farm buildings. And around it, we've got some small fields which will be developing into community agriculture plots and orchard and two forest schools. Next slide, please. So the fantastic view from the top, you can just see the corner of Radipole Village in the background there. The wood that you're looking at on your left is where we're putting our two forest schools. Next slide, please. This is the view as you enter Tumble Down Farm from Radipole Lane. This is before we started doing anything. As you can see, it's, it was quite overgrown and ahead of you there is one of the buildings. It's called Tumble Down Farm for good reason in that all the buildings are falling down. Next slide, please. This is a view from about six months ago. What it's showing is, is more or less that same view, but it's showing we're getting to work. We cleared a lot of the undergrowth. Ahead of you on the right hand side of this slide is what we call the swallow barn. This is a building we've managed to renovate. And it's got a outdoor seating area at the rear. And it gives somewhere where some of our, some of the people that are coming on site can shelter in the rain and have a brew. There, this, this centre of the slide there is what we're going to do next. This, we're calling this building A. Our vision here is to make this our kind of reception area, office, toilets and showers. So then we'll be able to get far more people on the site. We've got the money for it, thankfully. So thank you to town council. Thank you to the good people of Weymouth. So this is what we'll be doing come the spring. Next slide, please. Some of the practical work we've been doing. I've shown you the buildings. This is some of the growing plots on the left hand side. We've got a new pathway we've been putting in with the help of volunteers and what we call community drawing plots. The vision here is rather than having individual allotments like you might see in other parts of the town, these are community plots for groups. The idea being to bring people on who wouldn't normally have the confidence or the ability or the knowledge to get on the land and help them grow things together and in doing so, learn rural skills, find a purpose in life and it's actually immensely healing. You get physical health from exercise, but you get emotional health, mental health improvements for again, working outside with other people. So that's what's going on on the left, these growing plots. On the right, we've got a what's called food field one in development, which adults with learning disabilities have been working to great effect. Next slide, please. This is on food fields. One, we've put in a polytunnel, so it's just in time for the winter. So over the winter, when the weather is inclement, Graham will be leading a merry band of people from January onwards, growing onions and other crops, ready to go out on the land. Next slide, please. Just showing some of the groups coming on the land. We've got adults with learning disabilities, using one field. On the community agriculture plots, we've got people from mental health recovery charities. And also particularly dear to my heart, getting people who have homeless people who we can house, which is great, but a lot of homeless people then have nothing to do in the day. So what we're doing is welcoming them up here and they're doing a grand job. In fact, there's a competition between these plots, who, who grows the best. And I think the homeless people did the best. Next, please. Some little side shoots. It's not just growing. There's some archaeology work going on, Graham. Councillor Northern is pioneering that one, doing, bringing people on the land. And on the right there, a dry stone walling group which meets on a Wednesday. So if anyone wants to learn how to do dry stone walling with a sideline into hedge lane, it's on a Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. Next, please. This is us showing our local dink trees round that says Richard Draxx being, having a some indoctrination from Clive Tuck on the right, who's our project manager. It was great to have our M P and to receive his support. We also welcomed a few weeks later, the high sheriff of Dorset, Mike Dooley, who gave us an award for community development. Next slide, please. So this is my final slide. That's, that's the stone wall. As you can see, it's got a bit further with the rainbow offering hope for the future. So the aim is that this project as it develops, will welcome more and more people from various different marginalized groups, the ones councillor Northern was talking about. People who, who get forgotten will be coming here, finding a purpose, find a community which helps them grow and prosper. And in the, in the long run, we hope that this will then produce food, which will then sell in our council cafes and through veg box schemes. The income from that again then goes back to these marginalized groups who can then earn a real wage. So they find employment again, meets one of the core needs in Weymouth, which we heard about. So this is a place of hope, of recovery and a real asset. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Oral. And I, I, I have to say, someone who's been, who's lucky enough to be able to visit Tumble Down on a, on a regular basis. So I've been lucky enough to be able to pop up there when some of the vegetable have dropped and been able to buy some amazing marrows and great onions. So I'm really looking forward to the veg box scheme.
One final thing I forgot to say. Many of you may spend a fortune going to a gym doing weightlifting, but you can do it for free at Tumble Down Farm. We don't charge anything and we've got a lot of weights that need lifting this Friday. So if anyone would like to come down at ten o'clock on Friday with stout boots and a warm coat, we've got ten tonnes of stones to lay on a path and we'll give you tea and coffee and some biscuits afterwards. So do come and join us.
Excellent. And a great opportunity to see the site and, and what the town council is doing for people in Weymouth who have specific needs and who, you know, need to get out and enjoy the fresh air and, and get some exercise and some of those marrows, I swear, will be record breakers in future years as we refine our ability to produce giant marrows. Haven't seen those since I was little. So it's, it's been lovely to sort of, to reconnect with the land in that way. And it's been great to see so many local people reconnecting with the land in that way also. So next, we're going to hand over to councillor David Harris, who's talking to us on two subjects. Radipole Park and Gardens and then climate, climate change. So councillor Harris, over to you.
Just going to try and share the screen. I've got, got it on the side here, but it's not coming up. Can you do it for me, Jane? Probably be quicker. I sent it to you.
Presentation you just whisked over to me.
Oh, here we are. This should be it. No, screen sharing has failed.
Oh. Now occasionally, technology does let us down. Let me see.
Excellent. Thank you very much indeed. Well, one of the other projects that we've started to make great progress in is work at Radipole Park and Gardens, which is being supported by the lottery. And the local group for the Friends of Radipole Park and Gardens has been working with the town council and one or two other experts to help us create a park that is going to be fantastic place for parents and families and children to go. There's going to be a lot of activity there that they can get involved with. As you can see, it covers the whole area of the park from the bottom of Radipole Park Gardens as it comes down from Spa Road, right along to the shops at the far end. Although most of the work is being done from the tennis court to, to the end, rather than in the gardens that are already in existence. Next slide, please, Jane. This shows some more detail because one of the great things that we're going to be putting into this park is also a cafe. When you take some children out to play, you don't always want to sit with them and watch them. You want to give them their freedom. You'll be able to sit down and have a cup of tea, a cup of coffee in a very well designed and very green cafe that would be putting in the main area, which is going to be where the present car parking is for the play area that's there at the moment. The money that we're getting is about one and a quarter million. We hope it will pay for all of the facilities we want to put in, but of course, as everyone knows, unfortunately, price inflation is really hitting everything at the present point in time. But this cafe will have good access for people in wheelchairs. You can see that it has a slope sloping front to get people into it on a wheelchair or helping you to push a pushchair up if you want to take a pushchair with you at the same time. Thank you, Jane. We're also going to bring in quite a few new areas of activity. As you can see, some of the pictures there show you some of the equipment that we hope to have in the park that we put in in, in our plans, which are now out to attend in order for us to get on with the work as soon as the new year starts. There's, there's the obvious features that we find in many parks, although none in the Weymouth Park areas at the moment. But as you can see, there's going to be a lot more new activity than is there at the present time. Next, please. We mustn't forget that not everybody just wants to sit on a swing or walk around on a roundabout or whatever it might be. And the present skateboarding area at Radipole Park Gardens is not nearly strong enough and it's very, very old and a little bit tired. So we'll be putting in this area for people to learn how to skateboard or to scooter. But more importantly, this will be worked alongside a brand new, bigger skate area, skate park area that is going into the marsh. And we've just got planning permission for that. So having learnt to skate, skateboard on one of these smaller parks in the suburbs, you'll be able to go into the marsh and to develop those skills even further. Next, please, Jane. A lot of children love to play with water. And again, we're going to be putting in a water feature. It's very difficult to see what it looks like from, from the slide, but there will be a water play area, which we hope will again, certainly in the nicer weather, provide a lot of entertainment and fun for children. I remember my own children, when they were little, used to love going to a park and divert water along channels and enjoy that sort of activity as well as going on the equipment that was available. Thank you, Jane. But we mustn't forget that there are other activities that older children might like to get involved with. And so we've got part of the garden being set out with facilities and equipment that older children might enjoy. And also a permanent table tennis table. So when it's not blowing again like it did last Saturday, people can enjoy some outdoor table tennis, as you see in, in an area that is alongside the railway embankment. Thank you, Jane. But we mustn't forget that already in that area, there are some old courts that have become a little bit decrepit and, and unfortunately in need of a great deal of improvement. So the big basketball area at the centre of the courts is going to be turned into a single basketball court, but also putting in a small five aside football area for children to play in. So that will be a shared space in the centre of the present courts that are in the park. As you can see, with a much better surface on them than is there at present. Thank you. And equally, we're going to be ensuring we're going to be ensuring that the far end of the gardens, where the area of grass, which is often flooded, is planted with trees and flowers, taking us up to the orchard and the sensory garden that the Friends of Radipole Park Gardens are putting in. Before we go into that nice sensory area, I think the other thing I want to mention is that there should be some improvements to the public tennis courts that are adjacent to the tennis club. Thank you, Jane. As you can see, that is going to be a tremendous enhancement of the area that is there at present. We're very much hoping that the money will cover all that we want to put in. It did when we first set it off. But of course, as I say, inflation may make us have to modify some aspects of that construction. But we're out to tender. We're hoping to get the work started early in the New Year and it should therefore be finished by the end of 2022. So keep your fingers crossed and watch what's coming. Thank you. Okay, now I haven't got any slides for the next little bit. But I want to change the theme for a minute because one of the things that we have mentioned in Jane's introduction, but we've also mentioned many a times, is that when this town council first came into existence in 2019, we agreed to recognise that there was a climate and ecological emergency early on as a council. Now, there are two main elements to this that we are working on. First of all, we want as a council to become carbon neutral for all those things we are responsible for by 2030. So that's a much tougher target than the government has set itself. We want to get there for the things that we're responsible for by 2030. Now, the second aspect of our work is to help all of Weymouth to move in that same direction as quickly as possible, business, community and all of the residents. So we've got two main thrusts. Let's focus on the first thrust for the moment. How can we become carbon neutral by 2030? Well, the first couple of ideas are relatively straightforward. We want to make sure that we are not using any energy that's not green energy. And to do that, first of all, we've already set in motion and are going out to tender now for buying some solar panels to put on our three main toilet blocks so that we can start generating our own electricity in a green fashion, using those buildings that we own in the town centre and on our car parks. All those toilet blocks are also going to have, are already having lead lighting put into them. So that's also happening so that the lighting that we're using is as economical as possible. And then the third aspect that we can already tackle for ourselves is the fact that we use many pieces of equipment in our gardens and all of those garden vehicles will become electric vehicles over the next period of time. We started by buying our first one and we have a plan to buy a new electric vehicle every year as we move forward in the next five years. But the main aspect that we've got to tackle is the fact that if we give out a contract to someone to do things for us, we've got to try and ensure that they are as green as possible as well. Otherwise, we don't become carbon neutral ourselves. And one of the biggest contracts that we set is for the clearing of litter from the beach and from the promenade, which Dorset Council takes away for us and then obviously tries to recycle what it can, but most of it has to go to its incinerator over in Poole, Bournemouth. So we've got to find a way of limiting that. It takes, it gives us 60% of our carbon footprint. So we've got to find ways, and that's where, of course, the public can help. If next time you go to the beach, you can try and avoid leaving any litter behind, then clearly that's going to help us. If you can ensure that anything that goes into the litter bins on the seafront can go in the right bin where there are recycling opportunities, please do that. Next summer, you will see in front of our cafes, the two that we operate, a new system for collecting the litter, which we hope will improve the recycling rates that we have to offer ourselves as contractors of two of the beach cafe and the prom cafe. So that's what we are responsible for. The other element is to work with businesses and work with the residents. We want your ideas as to how all of us can work together and improve our carbon footprint. We can't do it alone. You can't do it alone. Let's see how we can help each other to put this together. We'll be organising meetings and consultations over the next 12 months. Please come forward and give us your ideas and we'll see how we can help you implement those ideas. So let's all work together to try and tackle this carbon climate and emergency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Harris. We now move on to events and we're going to hear from councillor Ryan Hope, who is the Chair of the Services Committee. Councillor Hope.
Thank you very much, Town Clerk, and good evening to everyone watching us on Facebook. So I've been asked this evening as the Chair of the Services Committee to give you an overview on our events calendar that we support and deliver here in Weymouth. Hopefully, you can all see my short slides. So I think everyone knows that we have a long established history here in Weymouth of hosting events and festivals. And the main reason we do this is to support our community and our economy throughout the year. One of the main directions we are, as a Weymouth Town Council, are looking to take our events is more community focused. We already have a fantastic events calendar. And unfortunately, that primarily focuses on our town centre and our beach. This council sort of recognised after Covid, it's important to bring communities back together and getting people in their local community, meeting each other and working with each other to deliver these community events. As you can see, the picture here was of the Western Party in the Park, which the Weymouth Town Council supported. And we're looking to bring these community events throughout the town as a rolling roadshow in future years. As well as the community events itself, the Weymouth Town Council supports annual events that are organised by the community sector, such as Weymouth Lions and Rotary, which raises much important charitable funds that are spent back in our local economy. So this year, much as last year, has been a very strange year for us and our events team. But we were very lucky that with the easing of lockdown, we were able to start to reintroduce some of our smaller events that we organise as a town council and help some of the community organisations and event organisers bring back some of the traditional events. Early this season, we were able to mark the US Memorial Day service on the seafront. And we were also able to bring back our Armed Forces Weekend, not back to its all its glory as we previously see, but it was a very good event held primarily in the Nove Gardens and the picnics. And it was really appreciated by, we know, the veterans and the armed forces who come to support it. Obviously, with the easing of lockdown, we were able to introduce more of our events and start some of our sports, featured events that happen on our beach. We have the return of the volleyball classics, which is always very, very good, as well as a number of other events such as our Weymouth based swim, yoga classes, aerobatics groups and all sorts of different event groups that come together and use our space. It's really important to realise that although Weymouth Town Council doesn't organise all these events, all of them, we do help facilitate them with the use of our land. And our events team bring a lot of experience and knowledge to help them make sure that all the correct legislations, event plans are there in place to safely deliver an event. So obviously, there's been a lot of talk recently, but one of the highlight of the events calendars this year, which we were able to reintroduce, was our five nights, Monday nights of fireworks, where we successfully trialled some low noise displays, as Town Clerk said in her introduction. These were very, very popular and draw people into the Weymouth Town Centre on a quieter Monday evening, which was a great boost to the economy and supported local businesses. We'll be discussing as a town council, the future of Weymouth Town's fireworks, our services committee this week. We know that there was a press release today saying we're looking to stop them. But this will be discussed further. We've a full debate at the Services Committee this Wednesday. So do come along and join us there, either in person or via the Zoom live stream. As I mentioned, the team do support a full events programme, both commercial and the community sector. As well as this, our events team are currently looking to install a new mural trail, working to support the neighbourhood plan. And I think the big thing is we're looking how our events can be sustainable to the local economy and the local environments to reduce our carbon footprint. That's a real important thing to consider. We do know that some of our events do leave a carbon footprint. But how we can offset that carbon footprint going forward is more up to discussion and how we can look to continue these longer serving events that are enjoyed by many, but doing it in a respectable and considerate way forwards. The good thing is, whilst the autumn came into place this year, we saw a lot of the events that were delayed from the spring happen. So they've rescheduled and we're hoping that those events will go back into their usual calendar slots next year. But these events have been fantastic in extending the season here in Weymouth. And we already are looking to see how else we can do events further into the year to bring visitors to Weymouth all year round. Some of the great events that we run as a town council out of season is, of course, our Remembrance Service Parade. And this year, we had probably the highest levels of footfall at that event than we've previously seen in other years. Some of the other big events we've seen this year is the 450th anniversary of Weymouth and Malcolm Regis. The town council opened up a pot of community funds for the community to bring events in their local areas. And there was some real good events with Weymouth and Malcolm Regis competing at the Mailwell Games. And we also did some commercial tea towels and pin badges and memorable collection items for people to get. As we come to the end of this year, we're already starting to look what we'd be delivering next year. A recent Finance and Governance and Service Committee, there was a pot of money allocated for us to look at the Queen's Jubilee and also the 10th anniversary of the Olympic Games that were held here in Weymouth and Portland and England as a whole, sorry, Britain as a whole. And we'll be looking to work with local organisations on that going forward next year. But we're hoping, as well as the community roadshows, that this will help bring communities back together and spark the real enthusiasm to get the community together. Thank you very much, Town Clerk.
Thank you, councillor Hope. Next, we have councillor Whatelyn. Councillor Whatelyn, you'll be talking to everyone about boundary work that's been going on recently.
Yes, thank you, Town Clerk, and welcome everybody to the town assembly. So I'm going to briefly talk about two boundary reviews we've done this year. As I said, we've been consultees on both of these. The decisions are made elsewhere, but we have done our best to represent the town on these two issues. The first one was the Parliamentary Boundary Review, which will be a change for the MPs' boundaries around the country. They have to periodically correct it to make sure that every constituency represents the same number of people. And the target is around 73,000 people per MP, 73,000 voters per MP, sorry, for every constituency on the mainland. Dorset has eight MPs, which won't change in that review. If you're not familiar, those were the eight MPs we currently have. And we were sent a draft proposal, which is what the Boundary Commission of England suggested, which looked a bit like that. I'll just toggle between them. You'll see that North Dorset seems to grow quite a lot. And there's some minor changes to South Dorset. So we were asked to comment on it. And I'll just zoom in on the local area there. On the left here, I've got the current boundaries. And that red outline you may recognise as the former Borough Council's limit, and that was South Dorset. One of the issues we noticed and we wanted to try and address is that we're an urban area and Chikrol next door is part of our urban area. And we share a lot of the same issues, but we've got this border between us. And we wanted to try and improve representation in this area. There's one particular recent incident, I recall, which was the academyisation of Budmouth College, which of course Budmouth College was in West Dorset, but most of its students came from South Dorset. And I certainly wrote to our MP and I was told, well, it's next door, but I'll try and help, which I felt that's not really the best representation for us. We really, we should have one MP to represent the whole area. And then we'll get more attention on our area. So that's the existing border on the left in red and the suggestion they brought out is this black border on the right. And you can see they thought to include Chikrol with Weymouth, which I think we're all pleased to see because I think that improves the representation here. But in order to do so, they've cut upway and Broadway out of the town. And also, there's a very large development north of Littlemore Road, which is going to come in shortly. So our representation is we were pleased to have more of the urban area in South Dorset, but we wanted all of the urban area, including upway Broadway and the new developments in. So we did some work and we crunched all the numbers. And this was the suggestion we found. We've submitted this and said, please, can you have this? We think this would be the best representation democratically for our area. In order to do this, I believe we gave wool back to mid Dorset, which are transferred to South Dorset. But this was our suggestion, this was what we've asked for. And keep an eye out next year when they publish the final version of these new boundaries to see if if we've managed to get the whole of the urban area with a single MP, because I think that will improve representation for us nationally. So that was the first boundary review we've been a consultant on. We've tried to have the whole of our urban area, three towns here, Weymouth, Portland, Chikrol together. We'll see what happens with that one. The second boundary review is called the Community Governance Review, and this is a review of all the parishes in Dorset. I've just got little facts here at the top. So there are 265 parishes in Dorset Council. Thirty-five of them are parish meetings. That means they don't have a council at all. They just have an annual meeting, a bit like our town assembly, where the residents can come to. And those are the very smallest parishes. They just have their one meeting a year. Then there's 111 small parishes that are formed into groups. So there's between two and five councils in a group parish. And that's 111 of the next smallest ones are formed into little groups. One of our neighbours to the north, Winterbourne Farringdon, is a group parish. There are five small villages, four north of the Ridgeway and Bincombe that form Winterbourne Farringdon, and they're a group parish. There are 98 then parish councils for small parishes and 21 town councils. In law, town and parish councils are exactly the same thing. Towns are just bigger and they style themselves as a town and they may have a mayor. But they are in law, they are just all parish councils. So the point of the review is to take account of changing populations and ensure that parishes all reflect communities. I've got some examples here and there is enormous variation in the size of parishes in Dorset. Chilcombe, which is near Bridport, has just 12 electors, 12 people in the electorate. Chilcombe, which is near Bridport, has just 12 electors, 12 people in the electoral roll. And they have a parish meeting, they just have a once a year meeting. Erwin Steepleton has 16 electors, but they elect two councillors from their 16 electors, which does seem rather extravagant. Upstern is the smallest parish in Dorset that has four people in the electoral roll. And between the four of them, they have to choose one, or they have to elect one to be a councillor for their group parish. Ferndown is the second largest parish in Dorset with 14,000 odd electors. And they elect 17 councillors for their town council. And Weymouth is the largest. We're almost three times the size of Ferndown and we have 29 councillors at present. There's a little map of all the parishes, all 265 of them. I believe Upstern's up here and the other one's over there by Bridport, if you're interested. But anyway, talking about the local picture. So one of the things was to ensure we meet good community guidance and we have to address any anomalies that have occurred through development. So these are three areas where we sort of said, look, there's an anomaly here. We've basically got the parish boundary dividing up an estate because of development has crossed the line over the last 50 years. Top left is Cobham Drive off Radipole Lane. The middle image is Nutgrove Avenue off Lane House. And top right is Nightingale Drive, which is off Littlemore Road. And the pink line here is our boundary. And in all cases, you find the lines have just cut straight through an estate. This, this means if you live in that area, you may have voting for a different council or a different councillor to your neighbour. You may pay tax to a different council to your neighbour. And one of the benefits for Weymouth is we as a town council provide some quite expensive services, particularly around things like the beach and the parks and events, which are for the benefit of the whole area. Everyone benefits from these rather expensive services. And if, if we make sure everyone that's living in the urban area benefiting from it chips in a bit, it spreads the cost more evenly. And the more people contributing, actually, the lower, lower the cost is for each, everyone in town. So we've requested those three areas become part of Weymouth Town as we feel they are, they're connected to us and that they, they should be part of our community. Similarly, there are several areas of new developments that are coming online. And in order to sort of make this review valid for a few years, we've said, we'd like to also include these areas. On the left here, we have the South Hill expansion to the west of South Hill and north of the police station. And also there is the football grounds development, which is conditional on them providing a new football stadium. But it has, has got planning permission. So we've requested those two areas, when they're built, that they become part of our town. And then on the top right is the Littlemore urban expansion north of Littlemore. I think that's the largest of all the developments proposed and we've asked that that becomes one of our town. And Winterbourne Farringdon, which is the small group parish north, sort of asked if we would take it on because they felt it was, it would, it was so big, it would overtake their entire community relative to the villages that are in Winterbourne Farringdon. So we've requested all of those areas get added into the Weymouth Town area. Then the second part of this review is to consider how many councillors we need for good governance of this council and how they're distributed, what warding we have. We did look, do some work and we compared ourselves to the other towns in Dorset. The, Weymouth presently has the, the, the largest number of people per councillor. Dorchester, there's about 1,000 people per councillor. Portland, Swanage and Bridport are all about 900 people per councillor. And Weymouth is currently about 1,800 people per councillor. So each one of us on this council represents twice as many people, which we felt was quite relevant. And we, we had a discussion and we had some workshops and we came up with several proposals as to how to, how to ward it. The, the general opinion of our councillors and that we voted for a majority decision here was that we wanted wards that were two or three councillors to provide optimal representation. We, we are aware there are lots of sub-communities of Weymouth and we wanted councillors associated with sub-communities, not, not large areas. We wanted to avoid single member wards because we felt they, they aren't as democratic sometimes. And we, we wanted, we wanted being a councillor to be something that isn't so arduous that only retired people can do it, but we wanted something that is, is open to all. And we want people of all ages and abilities to be able to stand and get involved and have a say in their community. So we, our deliberations was we didn't want to go for some of the numbers like Dorchester or Portland because we'd end up with 45 councillors, but to basically stay as we are. And I know there were a lot of people who thought we should reduce councillors because that will save money. And the answer is it doesn't save very much money at all. We did, we did work it all through. Each councillor on this council gets an allowance of a thousand pounds a year, which is less than six pence per property. So if we reduced the number of councillors by 10, that would save 60 pence per year per property, which is, is not very much at all. And a lot of the councillors we have do a lot of good work. Certainly, you've seen presentations from a number of councillors that are involved in projects. And they, they do a lot more than the bare minimum. So we felt, we felt we have about the right number. So the majority decision, which we have submitted to Dorset council as our initial proposal, is to have 30 councillors, which is one more than Canal, but that accounts for the additional new residents. And we proposed this warding, which is lots of small wards. So you would have two or three councillors for your local area, who can be local people, have good knowledge of your area, easy to get hold of. They're not too far flung or anything. And this is what we've proposed. So this has gone to Dorset and they've collected in initial submissions from all of the council, all the parishes, I think, in Dorset. And they will now prepare a, a draft proposal from all of these submissions, which will go out to public consultation in the new year. So you're very welcome when the public consultation comes around for Dorset to give them your comments. And I hope I've explained to you why we as a council feel this is the best option for us and would give us the best governance and ensure that our council is in a good position to do things in the future for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whatelyn. Just one thing I feel I should point out. Councillor Whatelyn, you already mentioned that obviously Dorset council are going to be consulting the public on any proposals they choose to put forward, but from any of the town and parish councils in Dorset. So everyone on Facebook, you will have a chance to personally respond to that consultation by Dorset council. And just to say that councillor Whatelyn mentioned the allowance that councillors are able to claim. That's a thousand pounds a year, which works out to 83 pounds per month. And that, but that's before tax and national insurance because councillors pay tax and national insurance on that. And I just wanted to make sure that it was mentioned that not all councillors take that allowance. It's a personal choice. Some councillors choose not to take that allowance. And that allowance is to be used on the expenses of being a councillor, be that travel to and from meetings, your IT at home, your computer, your printer, your printer ink and paper, those sort of things that, that meets those expenses that people may have being a councillor. If anyone out there is interested in becoming a councillor, the next elections are in 2024. So you've got a little bit of time to plan and have a think about that. I'm sure that all the councillors present tonight and, and any of the 29 town councillors would be more than happy to talk to anyone who has an interest and wants to know what it's like to be a councillor and, 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 you know, before they commit to actually standing as a councillor. As a town council, we'll be running a full campaign in the run-up to the pre-election period. So do look out for that if you are interested in standing and being a councillor. Or contact me or contact our office, office@weymouthtowncouncil.co.uk. I've got a message on Facebook and we'll be able to point you in the direction of where you can find out more information on what it actually means to be a councillor, what you have to do and how you go about standing for election. So we can support you with all of that if you do have questions. There was something else I was going to mention, but it has slipped my mind. So we can go seamlessly into the public question section. So we have, we're, we're just running two minutes late, which is pretty good. Well done, everybody. We've only had a couple of questions pre-notified. I've picked up one issue on the comments section from Facebook. So I suggest we move into the questions we've already had councillors and then take the one on Facebook. And if anyone on Facebook watching has a question, type it into the comments section because we may well get to answer that. So looking at the ones we've had pre-notified, if I read them out and then we'll move on to the, the responses. So the first one came to us via email from someone who says, I have a granddaughter who is an adult with special needs, who has her own assistance dog. And dog-friendly Weymouth and Portland also have a member whose young daughter has an assistance dog. We've noticed that not all play parks have the official signs making people aware that assistance dogs are not restricted in these areas. Could we have your reassurance that all areas have this signage and the public are made aware? So the public are made aware that assistance dogs are permitted in the play areas. Because without these signs, I'm afraid it's seen as indirect discrimination. Councillor Hope, as Chair of the Services Committee, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thank you very much, Town Clerk, and thank you to the member of the public who submitted this question. I think whilst dogs aren't permitted in any of our play areas, there would be an automatic exception for assistant dogs. And we recognise that this is an opportunity to improve our signage in the play areas and to quit, commit to equalities. In the new year, we're going to look to roll out replacement signs in the play areas and we'll ensure that there's a clear message that says assistant dogs are permitted. And I believe that will help avoid confrontation by people who may not understand that as it's a clear message to say that they are permitted there. I'd also like, just on that note, that the dog friendly was mentioned and I'd like to thank them for the fantastic work they do to bring issues like this to the council's attention and help just general members of the public be responsible dog owners. Thank you, Town Clerk.
Thank you, councillor Hope. And the next question is a nice, short, simple one. Again, probably for you councillor Hope as Chair of Services, are the fireworks going to go ahead in the future? Nice, simple one.
Thanks again, Town Clerk, for this one. I think I've already alluded to this in my very brief overview of our events festival. And we will be having a further discussions on the future of the events and fireworks, in particular on this Wednesday Services Committee. So I'd urge members of the public who feel passionate about this to attend that meeting. There is public participation. You're able to speak on the matter. And do come along and speak to our councillors of the committee and express your views. But at the moment, there is not a formal decision made on this subject.
Thank you, councillor Hope. It might just be helpful for me to just spend one minute for the public outlining the different committees we have. So every six weeks, full council meets, that's all 29 councillors meet every six weeks in what we call the full council meeting because everybody goes to it. Underneath full councillor are a number of different committees that look at different aspects of the council's work in a lot more detail. The councillor Ryan Hope is the Chair of Services. Now, services looks at those services that the town council provides. So the beach, parks and open spaces, cemeteries, allotments, toilets, events, community development. So all outward facing work gets looked at, scrutinised and managed by the Services Committee. On top of the Services Committee, we have a committee called Finance and Governance. That looks at how we run as a council. So it's a little bit more introspective. It's not looking at those things we do out in the community. What it does look at, that's very important for the community, is our grant stream. And we do have some grant funding left. So if you're a part of a local group that needs funding or you know a local group that needs funding, you can access up to 2,000 pounds for a project from the town council. We have funds available, forms and all the information on our website, so do have a look. The Finance and Governance looks at the council's finances, what we're spending, where we're spending it on, helps decide on the budget for future years. And also things like the policies that the council runs its services on. There is a planning and a licensing committee that meets every four weeks. Now, we're not the planning authority. So the town council doesn't make decisions on planning or licensing. But what we are is a statutory consultant. So we are consulted on all planning and licensing applications within the Weymouth area. And the committee decides how it wants to feedback, whether it's a, wants to make a comment or, or submit a no objection return. So that's a really good one if you're interested in planning or licensing issues. There is an HR committee that meets every two or three months. As you would expect with HR, a lot of those, the things we talk about can't be discussed in public because they pertain to staff members' pay or terms and conditions or things relating to particular staff members. So obviously we can't talk about that in public. So we are able to move into confidential session in some of our meetings. And if you've watched some of our meetings, you'll, you'll probably recall occasionally you'll have seen us, the councillors agree to move into confidential session. And we always say why and we don't do it unless we really have to. Sometimes there are things that we can't discuss in public. We try and keep those to a minimum and we try and be very clear why we're doing that when we have to do that. So they're the main committees and that's kind of how the council's organised. On every agenda, there's a space for public questions. So if you have a public question, you don't have to wait until one of the town assemblies. You don't have to email us, although you're all more than welcome to email us with the questions you have. You can come along to a committee meeting, you can stand up, you can ask your questions direct to the councillors. And if you let us have your question a good sort of three or four days before the meeting, we can normally reply to you at the meeting so that you get your answer straight away. So all information on our meetings are on our website or just email us, drop us a line on Facebook and we can let you know when the next meetings are. I'm hoping that was a bit helpful. Linked to meetings, we, we've had a few questions around live streaming. So, and, and how we do that and how many cameras we use, things like that. So if you go way, way back before Covid, if we can all remember that far back, our meetings were filmed by a local media company who put it out on their own social media feed and website feed. But they weren't able to stream it directly on the town council live stream. And we think it's really important that you can view our meetings on the town council Facebook page so that it's all in one place, it's all tied to the town council. You can access other information around the town council. It just keeps it nice and simple. We're exploring different ways of live streaming now that we're returning to face-to-face meetings. Part of the reason we returned to face-to-face meetings, that councillors made that decision to return to face-to-face meetings, was because of feedback we were getting during meetings from the public in the comments section saying, we want you to go back to face-to-face meetings. We think it's more transparent if you meet face-to-face. We want to be able to come along to those meetings. We want to engage with you face-to-face in the same room. It's not the same watching it on Facebook. Interestingly, we haven't had really many people coming along to those meetings and people are still watching on Facebook, which is not what we expected. We were expecting a lot more people to come along to the meetings. But it's October, November, it's cold, it's dark, it's wet. But I don't know, there's a little bit of me that thinks it's quite unfair on councillors that you will have to go to face-to-face meetings. And we're not getting quite the same level of public engagement that we hoped. But we're keeping that going by live streaming our meetings. Now, we're just about at the Services Committee, which is on Wednesday night, seven o'clock. Do come along, ask questions, engage with us. It's where we'll be talking about fireworks. So it's going to be a really good meeting, really interesting. We're trialling a third different system of live streaming our meetings. Now, it's not just as simple as me putting my iPhone in the middle of a room and Now, it's not just as simple as me putting my iPhone in the middle of a room and filming the meeting and live streaming it. Zoom's made live streaming meetings so easy. Um, it's not quite as easy when you get in a room when you've got twenty nine councillors, five officers, everyone talking and you need to make sure you film the right people at the right time and that you can hear people because without lots and lots of microphones, it gets quite difficult to hear people. And as you can expect, you would expect, some of those systems where we're talking about multiple cameras and new amplification and microphones, it's really expensive. So we're trialling lots of different systems. Um, we have trialled my iPhone on a little remote control tripod, which was the cheapest option we're trialling. And some of you will have, I know, watched that meeting and will recall that meeting. At the last full council meeting, it was more of a uh, uh, um, an integrated system, bit more sort of bells and whistles, bit more expensive. And then at the Services Meeting on Wednesday, we're trialling a mid range. I mean, councillors will be looking at, you know, is a cheap, is a cheaper system the better way to go? Because we're hoping lots of people are going to be in the room with us. Or do we need a more expensive system? And is that the right use of public funds to live stream meetings on Facebook? We've lots of questions for councillors to get to grips with on that front once we um, have trialled our third system and start looking at that. I have to say councillor Wakeling has been a huge support um, on the IT front because councillor Wakeling understands a lot more about IT than some of us. Um, did you, was there anything you wanted to come in on here councillor Wakeling on the live streaming of meetings?
Um, I I just wanted to add one comment, Jane, which is we do hire out our chamber for other meetings and functions. So if we have a chamber that actually has live streaming built in, that increases our income opportunities. So as an, as an investment, it's not just an internal investment for our own benefit. It's an investment that means that local businesses or organisations may wish to hire our chamber for their live streamed event and then we can charge more money for that. So it it it's it's got more benefits than just just for our our live stream.
Thank you for that. And of course, something you may have picked up on, people watching us in Facebook land, is you can now get married in the council chamber. Um, Dorset council are holding wedding ceremonies there on Fridays and Saturdays. So if you're looking at tying the knot in Waymouth, um, and um, uh, missing the um, registry office provision that was on the Dorchester Road, you can now get married in the council chamber. We've had it redecorated, it's had a new carpet, it looked lovely. We've had our first few ceremonies. Um, and it it it's a lovely addition. And of course, it it also generates income because we charge a fee to Dorset council to use the rooms. Um, and again, that would be another great use of cameras if great aunt Ethel in Sydney, Australia can't come over for the wedding. You could live stream it if we have the right cameras in place. So we're not, you're right councillor Wakeling, when it's not just about live streaming council meetings, it's about being a modern IT enabled organisation, which I know is something we're getting to grips with on a much, much wider level. Um, that is the end of the questions that we sort of have pre notified. I've just been looking through some of the comments. We have a few comments. Um, someone's saying the fireworks, fireworks are so appreciated by our children, please don't stop them. Um, we've had some comments around the water feature. Councillor Harris, that you mentioned at Radipole Park and Gardens, some concerns that parks are nice for family gatherings, but putting a water feature in them opens up a pan of worms. Water and sunlight produce algae and that becomes a slip hazard if walked on. Just to um, reassure you, um, Danny, I see councillor Gray, who is the Chair of Finance and Governance, has responded to you. He's also involved in the Radipole Park and Gardens project. Um, Aileen, who we've got designing the play elements, is really knows her stuff. She's a really experienced play and um, play area designer. She's designed water features like this. Health and safety is paramount in the water um, play area. And we've gone through algae, slip hazards, depth of water, legionnaires, you name it. Aileen has taken us through all health and safety and that has been taken into account. Please don't um, be concerned on that. Some great comments about a tumble down, it's a great asset for the council. Someone's saying that deprived is a relative term and 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 that's true. When we talk about our areas of deprivation, they may not be as deprived as some other areas. But for us, for the people in Waymouth, for the people who live in those areas who suffer a relative deprivation, it is very important. And we as Waymouth Town Council, we're concerned with Waymouth, with wa- making Waymouth better. So we are, you know, we have a duty to make sure that all people who live in the town are cared for. And those areas of deprivation give us some key areas on where we can look to improve um, the lives of local people. I have a couple of hands up, councillor Northam and then councillor Harris.
I I wanted to raise another topic as we don't have a question. I received a email today on social media, a comment on social media from a resident who said, why is Waymouth Town Council closing Redlands Sports Community Hub? I did respond to her, so I can give the answer, which is Waymouth Town Council are not closing Redlands Sports Community Hub. That decision has been made by Waymouth College and the owner of the land on which um, Redlands Sports and Community Hub is Dorset Council. So it's a decision between Waymouth College and Dorset Council. And I would like to reassure people that the councillors in Waymouth Town Council weren't actually consulted even, and we are going to see what we can do to save the indoor facilities at Redlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harris, I know you've been involved in Redlands as well.
Yes, I I let me add add to what David has just said and that I have already written to um, the people involved. So active Dorset, Dorset Council, Waymouth College and ourselves to come together for a meeting and for us to be shared all the information that they've got as to what they anticipated doing in the first place. So we should be having a meeting, we should be getting involved. The first meeting taking place at the moment doesn't look as if it's going to involve us, but certainly we are pressing very hard for that. And Rob Cole has actually agreed to send me some of the information that they collected as Waymouth College. The next thing that I wanted to mention was to reassure people in the same way that Jane has that, you know, all the water features will be well managed and well looked after and that this is found in many, many parks and and is operated very successfully. And I'm sure that the um, strength of of ability that we have running our parks and gardens will ensure that we are doing the same thing in in Radipole Park Gardens. And lastly, I'd like to just say something about fireworks because everybody else has said something about fireworks. And I think one of the important things that I want to correct that was said in the echo that this 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 morning was that the firework decision was because of cost. And it's nothing to do with cost. We're asking us to look at what we are doing with fireworks to ensure that it is not adding to our carbon footprint as much as it might. So we're wanting to try and ensure that the events that we put on, as I mentioned in in my little spiel earlier on, is 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 trying to take us towards that carbon neutral position. And obviously fireworks add to the carbon, so we've got to find a way of limiting that. And it's not anything to do with not wanting to entertain and um, support people. And I'm no doubt that fireworks will continue for some time in at some at some part of the year. But we are looking at our carbon footprint and that is the most important thing, not the cost.
Thank you councillor Harris. Just to backtrack to Redlands very, very briefly, councillor Pete Barrow has popped a comment on the Facebook feed, just reminding everybody about the petition, about saving Redlands. And the um, the, if you haven't signed that petition and you 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 want to, if you're out there in Facebook land, um, please look for that petition and do sign it.
I add, Jane, that it's on thirty eight degrees. So if you type in thirty eight degrees Redlands, you'll get to the site and you can enter your um, your vote and um, leave a comment if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Northam. I was just about to ask what the best way was to act as the petition because I couldn't remember if um, if if we put it on our social media or not. So thank you for that. Perfect timing. Um, we've come to the end of the questions. There's nothing else coming through. Councillor Barrow says it's on Facebook and thirty eight degrees and also the Wayport CCOS Facebook page is is carrying the links for it as well. Thank you councillor Barrow. Um, we don't have any other questions pre notified. We don't have anything else on um, just having a scroll through. There's nothing else on the comments section. Um, so and if there are any councillors who have anything they wish to add, any bits of news, anything you've not had the opportunity to talk to the public about? I'm seeing shaking of heads. So I think at this point, it is probably best, only a couple of minutes early, if we hand over to the mayor, councillor Colin Huckle, to close the Wintertown Assembly.
Well, thank you very much, Jane, and thank you to those who have been watching or will watch the recording in over the coming days. Having been a councillor for best part of over twenty five years before I joined this town council, and I may be a bit biased, but I I have to admit that the quality of both our officers and in particular our councillors is far better than I've experienced over those previous years. And to be honest, there's so many of them, including the guys that are here, but there are so many of them that are making tremendous contributions behind the scene. Uh, coming up with ideas, being involved in projects, not leaving it to consultants and other people, but actually, you know, committing their own time and effort into promoting Waymouth and helping to potentially make it a better place for us all to live, work and play. And it it's a privilege now as mayor to attend quite a few of the events. Now, it's been difficult over the last couple of years with Covid, but the last few months, there've been many events I've attended, including uh, some that we've made grants to, particularly to do with the four hundred and fifty anniversary. And these have involved disabled young people. Young people off the estates, uh, the churches have provided um, some lectures and some Elizabethan music. Uh, and and it's just been incredible to see the the different history uh, of Waymouth dating back to the four hundred and fifty years ago and before that, to be honest. And then coming forward last Saturday, in spite of the weather and in partnership with the bid We Are Waymouth, we set, we set, set our lights in the in the town centre, switched them on. And we had all these people running around in um, no, um, outfits, uh, pixie outfits to uh, try and achieve a record, which I think we're gonna, or they're gonna have a great go at next year. And and the town was filled with people and ITV came down and and filmed it. It should have been on this morning's programme, but I think the government Covid announcements got got in between. And hopefully it may be on tomorrow, but certainly uh, it 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 should come on sooner or later. And that's the one that starts at ten o'clock on weekday mornings. Um. So I think we just, we are a very ambitious and committed group of people working and as councillors in this council. We've been going two and a bit years, we've got another two and a bit years to go before the elections. We'll see about the boundary reviews, we see about Radipole Park and Gardens, it being implemented. Uh, and we continue with providing events. So with that, I'd like to thank you all for coming. Thank the present members here and the town clerk for their contributions. And wish you, everybody a good night and hope to see more members of the public at our meetings, particularly those that we are able to hold in public. The next full council meeting will be on, on 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 Zoom and live streaming uh, for various reasons to do with the pandemic. But certainly at the moment, our committees are still being, are now in public. So I wish you all a very good night. So thank you.
Thank you.